Welcome to November tenth, two thousand and fourteen Troy City Council Meeting. We're pleased to have this evening Father James Grau from Saint Anastasia Catholic Church for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let's take a moment to collect our thoughts. Blessed are you, Lord God of all creation, whose goodness fills our hearts with joy. Blessed are you who have brought us together this day to work in harmony and peace. Strengthen us with your grace and wisdom for your God forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting is called to order. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Slater, Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
Mayor Slater indicated that he will be just a few minutes late, so we'll proceed the meeting without him for now and not excuse his absence. The first set of business here, we would like to appoint the new mayor pro tem for the year, which happens every year after election. Somebody like to move that resolution?
I'll move it, Mayor. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby appoints Jim Campbell to serve as mayor pro tem for the city council of the city of Troy for a term scheduled to expire at seven thirty PM on Monday, November the ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick. Questions? Can we have the vote?
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
And if you'd like to move forward to be sworn in.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Charter of the City of Troy, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities and will be done.
And we'll take a short recess so that we can rearrange chairs.
Well, this should certainly prove to be interesting. This is trial by fire. We will start with item B, the adoption of the city council rules of procedure, which I think everybody has in their packet.
Yep. I'll move the resolution if you like.
Resolution is moved by...
Yeah, I'll move Resolution One B as printed in the agenda, adoption of the city council rules of procedure.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Fleming, also supported by Mr. Henderson. We'll have the vote.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Move on to item C, with the adoption of the Code of Ethics for City Council, as it's written in our packet.
Mayor? Resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics of the City Council of the city of Troy is recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support. It is moved by Councilwoman Henderson and supported by Councilman Fleming that we adopt the Code of Ethics that is written in our package. The vote, Ms. Business.
Council...
Questions?
Sorry.
Any comments, questions? Vote.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item D, the adoption of the Code of Ethics for boards and committees as illustrated in our packet.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll put forward item One D, resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics for boards and committees of the city of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick, supported by Councilwoman Pennington, that we adopt the Code of Ethics for the boards and committees. Any questions, comments? The vote, Ms. Business.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Now, we will move on to certificates of recognition and special presentations, and I believe Cindy Stewart is going to make a presentation on behalf of the city of Troy employees.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Good evening.
And all of city council. My pleasure tonight to introduce Dr. Tim Cole.
Cold Iron.
Cold Iron. The city employees, every couple months, we choose charities to give our Casual for Cause money. We're very grateful that we can wear jeans and we donate money. So for the months of, I think you were March and April, we raised eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
If you'd like to say a few words about Promise Village.
Certainly. She warned me not to take more than forty-five minutes, well, I'll honor that. I want to thank you so much. I am a Troy resident. I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the council, and certainly all the employees in this great city. Lived here for many, many years. Promise Village Home for Children is a children's home in northern Oakland County and a residential treatment center for abused, neglected, and troubled kids. We're on a seventy-acre ranch and provide individual therapy and group therapy for those kids who have families, a strong family-focused component. And a unique aspect of therapy is our animal-assisted therapy and equine therapy. Kids are matched up with animals and horses and many kids who come our way who have trust issues and attachment issues, bonding issues. The animals are a wonderful conduit by which we can reach them and make a difference in their lives. So I thank you so much for this check. I want to thank for all the employees for wearing jeans on our behalf and donating so that we could make further difference in the lives of the kids at Promise Village. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, on C two, as long as Cindy is up here, she's going to give vanilla check.
For our money for June and July, or May and June, we chose Troy Youth Assistance and we have a check for them in the amount of seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And I'd like to present it to their chair, Robin Beltramini.
Thank you, Cindy. What we can do with this kind of money, I mean, it's... Thank you.
You're welcome.
I understand why Promise Village got a little more money. April and March were way sloppier than May and June and way colder. I... We're grateful to everybody who wears jeans on our behalf, and thank you so much for thinking of us. This kind of money can send ten kids to day camp. It can pay for more than one of our elementary school events. We can do all kinds of things with just this kind of money, so... You want me to stay here?
Congratulations. And as long as you're up there on C three, we'll talk about the Troy Youth Assistance Annual Program, and Robin Beltramini as chairperson is prepared to go.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is... This is a very nice surprise. Thank you. It is my privilege to present the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen annual report to you. You got an electronic copy, so that was open to the public as well, and you got hard copies at your places. I was looking at the table and I thought, well, you've all heard my spiel about how Troy Youth Assistance came to be, but knowing that you're soon to have an empty place at the table, I'm going to give a little bit of background because someone's going to be interested in government that may not know the story. In the mid-fifties, some judges in the family division of the circuit court saw a lot of good kids coming through their system and thought, there must be something we can do to divert and prevent such good kids from having a court mark on their record that might defer a scholarship. It might mean they couldn't make a team that they were qualified for. It might mean they couldn't later have a job that they really wanted. So these brain trust got together and they formed what was called Oakland County Youth Assistance. The action was to put a youth assistance preventative organization in every community in Oakland County that would buy in themselves. The circuit court would provide professional caseworker counseling, and the communities, both the school district and the government, would have to put some skin in the game in some way. And so in nineteen fifty-eight, in nineteen fifty-seven, the Troy School District signed on, and in nineteen fifty-eight, the city council did too. So we've been here for fifty-six-plus years. And we are a preventative organization. We do some family education, we do youth involvement, we do recognitions, we do memberships, we do mentoring. We do all kinds of things, which I will now tell you. Last year, and I'm not going to read this to you, I'm going to assume you all can read, last year we added some new twists and programs. The first was a parent cafe. That was for the parents of preschool children. As the education community has learned that early childhood education makes a difference, kids don't come with an owner's manual, and so parents need some education too. And they need to know how to channel all of that preschool energy and curiosity in two ways that are helpful for the child, for the family, and for the community. So through that grant funding from the county, they got a grant, and then they passed it on. We were able to offer that to some preschool parents, and that's the kind of thing that the city dollars that we get, that are above our overhead costs, could very well help us to offer again. We did our traditional six-week parenting seminars for school-age children's parents. We did our risky behaviors, we did actually sexually active teenagers, we did our technology seminars that started out as just what do you do with a smartphone and where can your kid go with that to get into trouble? When we offered it in the spring, we added technology addiction because the counselors are seeing more and more of that, and knowing that more and more students in our community are getting technology firsthand from both the schools and their parents. We felt that that was an area that needed to be addressed for parents to know how to deal with that. Camp skill building, we sent several kids to day camp. We helped several families provide skill-building opportunity through the school year for their students. Membership, we added to our board, we filled some leadership positions, and we're grateful for the community's help. We will always take more help. Task volunteers, we can find a place for you at two hours a year, or two hours a week, or four hours a month, whatever. We'll work it out. Call or email TYA and we'll sit somebody down to talk to you. I told you last year when I delivered the annual report then, that we needed ten thousand dollars from the city of Troy. And I also told you that if you look at our budget, that doesn't cover all of our expenses, but that's what we needed. And we continued to raise money because we didn't have that money yet. So in this report, you will see eleven thousand dollars that we raised ourselves through our Dollars for Education, through our advocate program where people wrote us checks, and through our Carson Community Days fundraiser. We got seventy-nine hundred dollars as a beneficiary of the Troy Police Charity Golf founding, and we are grateful that all of those entities stepped up to get us through that very tenuous year. Speaking of the Carson Staybooks, Carson Community Days are this weekend, and you can buy for five dollars, five hundred dollars of coupons from me or any other board member or at the TYA office. Community Day shopping is this weekend, so you don't even have to let them burn a hole in your pocket. Youth involvement, we did our usual at Troy High. We honored kids who made a self-motivated positive impact on the community. That was youth recognition, not youth involvement. We did that in partnership with Troy Rotary. Youth involvement had a new format this year. Instead of moving our elementary school event from school to school, we did a series of three events at Moore School with the same twenty-seven grade schoolers, and as much as we can control high school kids, the same high school mentors for those kids. So we tried to build those relationships so that those kids could really learn from each other and there could be some modeling behavior and some intervention if necessary. And we will do that this year as our format again. In fact, the first event was tonight at Troy Union, this afternoon. Mentors Plus, we have matches. We have Troy students still in need of mentors. We have kids out there that need somebody to listen to them, to share with them, to build a regular, at least two hours a week, relationship, and this is, in some cases, that child's only opportunity to have that kind of child-centered focus every week. So if anyone is willing to step up, I know you all are busy. Busy people make great mentors. You have great things to share, but anyone else is well. That would be very helpful to us. Our caseworker, as I said, she is paid for by Oakland County, but with Karen Woncevich, that's not all she does. She works very hard with the middle school and high school counselors, particularly to find leadership and service project opportunities for those kids that aren't clubbers, they aren't joiners. So... But they need to be worthwhile citizens, so how do you imbue that without those club opportunities? And so last weekend, in fact, twenty kids from Athens High School and Smith Middle School bagged leaves, to the tune of two hundred bags, Saturday morning, for people who had been referred to us by Troy People Concerned and members of our own board, people who couldn't do their own thing. Those kids had to recruit each other to get a cadre of kids big enough to make that work, and then they did the project and we paid for pizza. So that was how that was won. You'll see on the back of the report, we had sixty-nine new cases this year. We had sixty-eight additional cases referred to us that had to be analyzed and then passed on to other places for more extensive service. Fifty-one of those sixty-nine cases are teens, but we do have clients as young as five years old. So it's not just a teen problem in Troy, but most of our cases are prevention center. I want to talk a little bit about where your ten thousand dollars went as we planned this year, because I think it's important for you to know that as you go into budget next year, because it really does make a difference with us. I told you we would pay for our secretary and we would pay our insurance, and then we needed a little bit for additional programming, new things, because our counselors, our parents, and our school officials have found that there were some things that no one was offering and somebody needed to. So if you look at, I included a parent education schedule in your reports, and if you look at that, there are four programs that are highlighted as new. One of them is a reworking of the parenting classes with boundaries. The other three are brand-new. One is about healthy relationships for teens. Another is anger management for middle school and young high school boys. Another is Girls Stand Strong about how to deflect middle school bullying. These are all facilitated by an outside instructor, and they are new programs. So that is where some of the balance of your money went, is to develop these kinds of programs and to find the proper facilitators to make those work. So for that, we thank you for continuing to be our safety net. We are glad to be part of the Troy community, and we hope we serve you well. Do you have any questions, anything you'd like to ask me? Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Robin, it's great, and Troy is very lucky to have the Troy Youth Assistance Program. It's a great program. Appreciate all your work. Okay, we'll move on to C four, which would be the Lights of Hope with Barbara Knight, and I think we have a...
Presentation? Yep. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hello, city council. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to give recognition... Yeah, no pictures. This is in recognition from the Troy Kiwanis Foundation to the city of Troy for their founding support of the Troy Lights of Hope project that began last year. So with tremendous appreciation for allowing us to do this project and for your support of infrastructure and numerous things, we would like to give you this recognition.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the city of Troy, I appreciate this, and we accept it with all humbleness. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm very pleased to be back this year. It looks like our event is going to happen again. Last year was our founding year of Troy Lights of Hope, and so I'd like to go through our presentation of what's new this year and what we have going on. The tree sponsors that we had last year, we had about thirty-three trees lit, and you can see the corporate sponsors here. This is a community service project that the Troy Kiwanis Club is very pleased to put on, and this year, most of those sponsors are returning. We have a fun new addition, MJR Cinemas, a new resident in Troy, has sponsored a tree, and everybody in our club is actively working right now to get the rest of the sponsorships in. We don't know how many trees will be lit yet this year, but it's a work in progress as we speak. So this really has, again, two elements to it. We have the community service project, which is where we gain corporate sponsors. There's not a fundraising element to that, it's just a community service project so that we can light up Big Beaver Road during the holidays. And so we have a separate website that we jump to for sponsoring a tree, and then we have the fundraising element, and I'll get to that in just a minute. The corporate sponsorships for the trees are twelve hundred dollars per tree. Those returning are a thousand dollars. It's what's new this year, made payable to Troy Foundation, that means the Troy Kiwanis Foundation. We are going to be adding more lights to the trees this year because we got some feedback that people wanted more lights on the trees. I kind of agree. I think that's a great idea. Every corporate sponsor has a banner. That's Maggiano's banner. Hopefully, they'll be back this year. They're having trouble with... Not trouble, but they're low on their numbers this year because of the traffic backup from construction. And it's just like what we have out front of City Hall today, right? It's difficult to get around Troy right now, but it's necessary improvements, and we're grateful for the better roads. Don't get me wrong. But hopefully, Maggiano's will be back. They're really working with corporate to get that done. We do provide a stacked logo for the narrow banner at no additional charge, a professional design by our team to make it work, and last year, half of the company logos had to be redesigned by a design team, and we give that back to the sponsor as well. This is our budget for each sponsorship. It's pretty cut and dry. The Troy Kiwanis Club made sizable contribution last year in order to make it work. We were a little shy. If we had had about eight more trees, we would have broken even, but, you know, we'll recoup some costs this year and we'll just make it work. Okay, this is the fun part, that in addition to lighting up Big Beaver Road, what could be more beautiful than that? What's more beautiful than that is giving back to our community. And so what we've decided to do is, we've decided to take the light set sales that we have and share that with our community, and our first-ever community-wide fundraiser that we know of. For many, many years, the Troy Kiwanis Club has been kind of the big brother or the big sister in our community. We're a weekly lunch, we meet for lunch weekly, a group of community business people, and we raise money for our community primarily for the benefit of children. And so our founders founded the Troy Boys and Girls Club. We've given over two hundred thousand dollars over the years to the Boys and Girls Club. Many other area organizations such as all the organizations that belong to Leadership Troy have come to the Kiwanis Club for donations. We've given to the Troy Youth Assistance, for instance, the group that was just here. And so this way, we really wanted to share in this fundraiser in a very special way. So for every light set that's sold for fifteen dollars, for whatever designation is designated to... For whatever organization that's designated to benefit from that, we will write a check for three dollars. So for instance, if the folks that support Troy Youth Assistance were to buy light sets and go online and buy them at our site, whatever their sales total, if they sell ten strands, we'll write them a check for thirty dollars. If they sell a thousand strands, you can do the math, that's three thousand dollars, right? So we're very excited about this. We've opened it up to our entire community, including several of the things right here near and dear to the city of Troy, like the Friends of Troy Library and the seniors, Troy Rotary, Troy People Concerned, Troy Public Library, like I said, and of course, the Troy Youth Assistance, to name a few of the twenty or so that we have listed. So we're very, very, very excited about that. All of the sponsorships and all the light sales can be taken at troylightsofhope.com. People can check out right online using a credit card. It's a preferable way doing it. For compliance purposes, we have two websites, two merchant accounts, and two bank accounts. Special thanks to Communication Associates for our logo, Printmasters and Madison Heinz for all of our mailers, Lynda Ashley for Public Relations, Ferocious Design and Claussen for all the design work, Quality and Design Electric of Rochester, who's our contractor, Orman, who's our wholesale for lighting. The lights that go on our trees and that are being sold are the same that decorate Rockefeller Center in New York City. They're high-quality, commercial-grade light sets that will last three years, and you can plug them in end-to-end, forty-one strands without any problem. Thank you for the city of Troy, Department of Public Works for their guidance and cooperation. Thank you to the Troy Downtown Development Authority and Kirkville Realty as well. Here's some pictures from last year's event. That's in front of Columbia Center. My husband wasn't happy with me when during the snowstorm I said, "Come on, we gotta go take pictures." And there's City Hall. By the way, I represented Troy Athens High School in nineteen seventy-eight on the Troy Youth Assistance Board. And my mother worked for years in this building, so Troy means a lot. And there's the Bridge to Somerset Collection. Any questions? No?
Excellent job.
Troylightsofhope.com.
Thanks, Barbara.
And troylights@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, there are no carryover items, so we are going to move on to public carings, and Mr. Neil Lacari will come up and explain everything we need to know about this.
Excuse me, Councilman Teetz. 52 votes. I just wanted to mention that when Barb's mother was nice enough to retire, that's how I got hired in here. The position opened up in the Assessing Department, so you can either blame her or thank her, whatever your bent may be. We're here to talk about tax abatement for Toyota Goshi North America Corporation. There'll be two public hearings. The first one will be to establish whether, if you'd like to establish an industrial development district, and the second one would be to grant the actual abatement. As you're aware, you can't grant an abatement without establishing a district first, so all the information that you need to make both decisions will come for this first public hearing. I really won't have anything more to add for the second public hearing. So Toyota Goshi North America, they're an automotive supplier of probably Delphi and Visteon are direct competitors of theirs. They're a multinational corporation. They have a large office building in Troy. They've been there since June of 1994, so they've been there for 20 years. Recently, the building came up for sale, and they bought it with the thought of consolidating some of their operations in southeast Michigan to this location because there was room in the facility. As you might imagine, the building was pretty worn out at that point in time. So they're proposing to do extensive renovations to the building, which a lot of them have already started, and then they're going to add, I think it's 51, yes, 51 new jobs. They have 136 jobs there right now. They'd like to add 51 new jobs to the location. The investment will be $4.2 million, of which 2.9 million is actually improvements to the real estate itself, and the remaining 1.3 million is for the personal property. Under the city's tax abatement guidelines, they qualify for a nine-year abatement. They meet all the criteria that we require. On the $4.2 million, they would actually save $85,000 in taxes over the life of the abatement. The City of Troy itself would realize $28,400 in taxes that we're not currently collecting over that same nine-year period. Lisa Owens, I've dealt with her quite often. She has a cohort with her. Glenn Lepin did a lot of work on this. I can't thank him enough. Every time he comes in my office, I have more work to do, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing. And in relation to full disclosure, I should notify you that my youngest son does work for TGNA. He works in their Plymouth facility, so not here in Troy. They did send him to China three weeks ago. They brought him back, so I'm not under any duress. So, and I can answer any questions you might have at this point in time.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we will open the public hearing for this. Are there anybody in the audience that has any comments, questions, statements? Counsel, any comments? Okay. Okay, we will close the public hearing on E1, and we will take a vote on the resolution.
Mayor?
Yes.
I will move Resolution E1, Industrial Development District IDD for Toyota Goshi NA Corporation, North American Corporation, 1400 Stevenson, as printed in the agenda.
Support. Motion is made by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Henderson to approve the Industrial Development District for Toyota Goshi. We'll have the vote.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. See, we have a visitor in the audience. Mayor, would you like to come forward?
We have a recess for five minutes.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll take a recess for five minutes.
We'll be back in session. Thank you to the new Mayor Pro Tem for handling this while I was running from the airport. Our next item of business is E2, which is the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate, IFEC, for Toyota Goshi NA Corporation at 1400 Stevenson. I will open the public hearing and ask the City Assessor, Nino Lacari, if he wants to say anything. Are you all set? Okay. Any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for discussion.
Just briefly.
Councilman Teetz?
A moment ago, someone asked me, "Why did you vote against the, what do we call them?"
Tax.
Industrial.
Tax abatement.
And I simply posed tax subsidies, giveaways, corporate giveaways, whatever you want to call them. And so this is another, one of these, and no offense to this business in particular, I posed all of them, and so just wanted to clarify in case people are confused and so forth, so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the table wish to comment on this item? Someone would like to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve E2 as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Nino. Next is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and our first speaker is Jonathan Joakob, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I reviewed the report that you guys are going to hear. I'm assuming in a little bit. Most of the report are things against our businesses that happened outside in our parking lot, which is outside of our jurisdiction, outside of my control at all times of the We, I mean, I haven't really violated any laws as far as the city or state law until this ordinance was created. I've been cited for being in the lounge after midnight a couple of times, cleaning up just a few things like that. For example, like bars, if somebody gets in trouble outside of a bar, you get pulled over for a DUI, does that mean you go back to the bar and tell them, "Hey, you were in trouble. You have to shut down at this time," or if there's a fight that breaks out, do you blame the bar? No, it's not our, it's not our situation. It's something out of our control. However, if the council wants me to hire security or whatever it is they want me to do to keep these problems from happening in the parking lot, I can attempt to do that. I can do my best at it. However, as far as myself, my business, and my employees are concerned, we have yet to break any serious laws, and I still don't understand like how this is, how you guys justify this thing. All I'm asking honestly is for the two hours, the extension. We just want a chance to compete with everybody else. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to argue or do anything like that. I'm just, I'm here, I've lost a lot of money. My whole family's life savings is in this business, and all I'm asking is for an opportunity to show you guys what it is we really can do. You're all more than welcome to come and hang out, and I'd be more than happy to show you how I operate, what we do, and that it's really not as bad as people make us seem. You know, all I'm asking is for this opportunity. We were supposed to have this chance a year ago, six months after the original hearing. I was supposed to get another shot to prove to you guys. I never got it. Here I am, 18 months later, still fighting for the same thing. All I'm asking is for a chance to prove to council, City of Troy, Police Department, everybody here, that we're not, we're not what you think we are. We're not a bad business. We just, we just want to make a living. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There will be some discussion on the item shortly. Next is the City Council Administration Response Report to Public Comment. Any reply this evening? The only reply I have to Mr. Joakob is, and I certainly don't speak for the Police Department, but if somebody is drunk driving out on the street and causes a death or causes an injury or does something, the bar certainly is responsible and could be sued. They are not exempt because they over-served somebody, okay? Next is the postponed item, H1, the 2015 council meeting scheduled. Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, we postpone this item. Are you, are you okay with?
That's fine, yes. We went through all the dates. They're, they're fine and have no issues with them whatsoever.
Would you like to move that?
I would like to move that forward to be approved as written. Support.
Mayor, just want to make sure that it's the one on the table with the correction.
I will, okay, thank you. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell and supported by Councilman Henderson that we will approve the 2015 council meeting schedule as printed on the yellow item that is at the table for council this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is regular business. I1, Board and Committee Appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening. I will turn the microphone over to Councilman Henderson for City Council appointments this evening.
I apologize, this should be Mayor Pro Tem Campbell's deal, but we didn't talk too much about this beforehand.
Right ahead.
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. For the Animal Control Appeal Board, for a term expiring September 30th, 2017, Terry Knight.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Fleming, that we appoint Terry Knight to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term that expires 9/30 of 2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
No.
There will be no nominations from the chair or for City Council this evening, so we pass on that item. I3 is a closed session request. There are none this evening. So we will move to I4, a winter maintenance agreement, the Road Commission for Oakland County, with an introduction by Tim Rishnick, the DPW Director. Good evening. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As stated, I'm here to introduce a proposal for a agreement with the Road Commission of Oakland County for winter maintenance where the City of Troy maintains the county roads. This contract allows us to provide a higher level of service, uniformity in service, so that Oakland County can handle their higher level roads, I-75 and M-59. We've been doing this winter maintenance contract for 13 years. Our cost over and above the revenue that we've received is just shy of $100,000 a year, $98,130. We've had our up years and our down years. We've had three years where we actually received more money from the county than we spent. Last year was not one of those. If you remember, we had 95 inches of snow. Our average around here is 45 inches of snow. In accordance with that, anytime you have imbalance like that, you will get shortages of materials. The mined salt is a little short this year, so our salt prices have been doubled. It was $36 last year. We're up at $76.61. This is not a new phenomenon. Back in 2008, we had some of the same issues and we had a roughly a 60% jump in, in salt prices. Forecast for this winter is colder than normal, but average snowfall. Hopefully, they're right and we can have an easier winter, spend a little bit less money. One of the things that we're doing is adding more liquid chloride to our salt when we apply it this, this winter. It's a balancing act. Used to be when salt was a little cheaper, chloride was more expensive. We didn't put any more of the expensive chloride on it, but now those costs have reversed themselves. So there is some tricks in Kurt Bogensy's bag that will help us keep those costs down. And that comparison, you know, we make on a regular basis. So with that forecast, any questions?
Questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I think we understand that the price is going to go up this year for sure. Somebody like to move the resolution on?
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson.
Like to move I4 Winter Maintenance Agreement as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell that we approve the winter maintenance agreement as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is I4, a recommendation, 18-month review of the amendments to the Troy City Code, Chapter 77, smoking lounges, hours of operation, with an introduction by Chief Mayor, City Attorney Lori Redd Looman. I will defer to the City Attorney after the mayor speaks. Good evening. I'm sorry, after the chief speaks.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we're here tonight because a hookah business owner has asked for extended hours of operation to help attract customers. Please recall that prior to May of 2013, we had several incidents at hookah establishments in the City of Troy. We had large crowds that generated multiple incidents requiring a police response, including a shooting, fights, drug and alcohol possession, noise, traffic, and parking complaints from area businesses and homeowners. There were no restrictions on the hours of operation for hookah establishments, and many of the incidents occurred after midnight. On May 8th of 2013, City Council voted to amend City Ordinance, Chapter 77, and these changes solved the problem for us. Six months later, council reviewed the ordinance again and made no changes. I have with me tonight Sergeant Josh Jones. He's been tasked with coordinating our hookah establishment response. I would like him to discuss the calls for service. And also, we have with us tonight Law Clerk Intern Nicole McMillan. She will discuss what she discovered regarding hours of operation for area hookah lounges.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor Slater?
Good evening.
City Council? I'm happy to provide you with the statistics that were presented with the report. As you can see, operation of the hookah lounges in the City of Troy has been very smooth over the last year. Last time I was here was in November of 2013. We were coming off a time that was also a pretty smooth operation, and that goes hand in hand with the adoption of Chapter 77. I'm very confident that the reason I can provide you with these statistics and lack of calls for service at our hookah lounges is because of Chapter 77, because of the hour restrictions that we have in place in the City of Troy. I have been in contact with several police officers and police administration and departments bordering our city, near our city, such as Rochester and Shelby Township. They paint a little bit different picture on their hookah lounges in their cities. Their hours of operations are different. I highlighted some of those in a report that I think each of you got a copy of. Most nobly, I'd like to talk about the City of Rochester. They have one hookah establishment in their city. Currently, it closes at 3:00 AM, 3:00 or 4:00 AM. They're recently, in the last two weeks, they've agreed to change their hours, to cut their hours back, from what I understand. The midnight sergeant there, I asked him to provide me with some statistics he pulled from his police records. And according to him, in the last few months, I believe it's a six, six-month study, he had 48 police calls for service, and 90% according to their police records occurred between the hours of midnight and 4:00 AM. So 90% of 48 police calls for service occurred between midnight and 4:00 AM. That's for one hookah establishment in the City of Rochester. Over the course of the last year or 18 months, I've gotten phone calls or emails monthly from area cities asking how, what we do in the City of Troy in regards to our hookah establishments. I've offered them, given them a copy of our ordinance, given them some advice on what we, what we do in our city, and hopefully it's helped them. But we're looked at from the outside as having success with our hookah establishments where other cities can't say the same thing right now. So our recommendation, based on what, not the problems that we've had, because we haven't had problems at our hookah establishments, our recommendation is to continue with Chapter 77 as written. And that's because we know what it was like before. We had those restrictions on time when we had the problems when they initially opened. And we can see what other cities with the troubles other cities are having with their hookahs that are open past midnight. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Councilman Pennington?
Do you know offhand what the City of Rochester was going to limit their hours to, what they decided on?
Yeah. I know from talking to the sergeant there informally, that, and talking to their hookah bar owner, he came to them because they were in the process of putting a presentation together for city council, their city council, to limit their hours. And he inquired if he agreed to close at 2:00 AM, would, to not go forward with the, with the ordinance. So as of right now, that's what's in place, an informal agreement to close at 2:00 AM.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, at the last council meeting, you had asked for our office to come up with some of the different ordinances in other communities. There was a statement that there were no other cities in the State of Michigan that closed at midnight. And I gave it to our law clerk, newly passed the bar attorney, Nicole McMillan, and she is here just to provide some further explanation as to the color graph that you have.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Slater and Councilmen and Women. Thank you so much for allowing me to explain this. I organized the graph that you guys see on the screens and then also I believe you have in front of you. But as, as Lori stated, Troy right now is not alone in closing at midnight. Southfield has an ordinance in place currently that also requires the hookah lounges to close at midnight. And Plymouth is kind of in the between stages right now. There's a proposed ordinance. So we're not quite sure how that's going to go just yet. And then also, you'll notice the yellow moratorium. In certain cities, they don't have any ordinances in place right now, and they're trying to figure out what would be the best resolution. And as you heard previously, some, some of the cities have contacted our officers to kind of figure out how things are going in Troy, and they're considering it in these other cities too with the, with the, with the moratoriums. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Law Department? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Troy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief? Any questions for the chief? Mayor or comments? Did you want to say?
A brief closing, Mayor, sure. In review, the operation of the hookah lounge establishments within the City of Troy within the last year, and comparing it to similar establishments in other jurisdictions nearby, it's our recommendation that Chapter 77 remain status quo and that we make no changes. We have a proposed resolution to that effect within your council package. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Did you manage your question, Nick? Did you? No. I'm the one that asked to, to have this report, and I certainly appreciate the thoroughness that the City Attorney and your staff and the Police Department went to to provide, I think, all of the answers that we need at this point. I think that we've done our due diligence, and I believe that we've looked at this from all angles. We've looked at it six months, decided to stay the same, and now we've looked at it again. So in my, my opinion, we're going to put this to rest this evening unless there's, there's something else that comes forward, at least while I'm here in council. So I will move the resolution that the Troy City Council shall take no action on the request to amend Chapter 77 of the City of Troy ordinances as recommended by City Administration. Support. Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we take no action on Chapter 77 as recommended. Discussion. Councilman Teetz?
So just for the sake of clarity, we don't need to bring this up again and say, as far as I'm concerned, there's no reason to bring it up now. And so I'm glad we're going to put this nib in the bud because we received another email this evening from a business owner that was expressing their concerns with, with the business as is being run right now. Moreover, it is a responsibility of the, the owner of the restaurants, the owner of the hookah bar, for those people that come in and out. You know, we've dealt with a bar here in Troy, a restaurant bar, that had issues with people outside the restaurant. And you know, it's, it's one thing to say, well, they stepped out the door, it's no longer my responsibility. No, it is. And then going, going forward, a couple other things. One of the arguments I've heard in the past was, oh, this is a nightlife thing. You are, you're being stodgy City Council members, not wanting nightlife coming into, into your city. Number one, who in the world thinks a nightlife is appropriate to Quinder in Iowa or at the corner of John R. in Long Lake? This just doesn't make sense. And so I am absolutely settled on this. I've been settled for the last 18 months that this is the right move for those people that are going to be on City Council in the future. Hopefully, they appreciate that this is something that's been a benefit to our city and has hopefully solved problems that we didn't know were existing or that, that could have happened because this, this ordinance wouldn't have been there. So with that, I'll absolutely be affirmative, and hopefully we don't have to discuss this again.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I also am in support of taking no action on this. You know, I'm pro-business. I think, you know, the community is better because of all of our businesses. But the businesses have a responsibility to the public in, in maintaining some sort of stability in the neighborhood that they're in. And, you know, the comment earlier about, you know, they'd hire security at this particular location, it's been 18 months. And if they've got security issues and they haven't hired security already, that's a problem in my eyes. The email we got earlier was trash in the parking lot, and I won't even go into, you know, what type of trash that they, they found in the parking lots after an evening of operation. I just don't think it's, it's appropriate to extend those hours to a degree where people are going to come in and out, cause havoc in another business community, making patrons of, of other businesses locally afraid to, to do commerce there and, and naturally the neighborhoods. So I'm all for keeping status quo. I look at this as, you know, if, if 12 o'clock midnight worked, then it worked. There's no reason to really look at this any further.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I, I very carefully considered this, and I want to assure the business owner that I have. I've had quantitative input and I've had qualitative input, including from young people. This city is the safest city ranking that it has because we are very vigilant about looking at our resources charged with keeping us safe and the situations we have on hand. We try to be vigilant and proactive. We've seen success with the move we took at keeping things safer. This has also happened with other establishments in the past. This city is known for this. Restaurants in the city that serve liquor have known how we step in proactively. It's not that we're not business friendly, but the very first and foremost thing that we're accountable for is the safety and infrastructure for the city that enables everything else to happen. The businesses adjacent to your establishments, the homes nearby, our kids when we're out there. Our police force has limited resources. And at night, when we have two or three cars at a parking lot, because it's outside an establishment and it's out of control, that's, those are three cars, two cars, even just one car, not elsewhere in the community where we may need them. That's not a good use of our police resources, and I would be, it would be irresponsible for me to say we want to make a switch that diverts resources in that way. I'm not anti-hooka. I'm not anti-hooka lounge. There is an issue here that we have with safety. I am pro-safety and pro-protecting the community. So I agree with withholding as we have.
Any other comments from council? We have the vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes just to the owner. Going to have to make it work ending at midnight, and I'm confident in the not-too-distant future, that's going to be the norm around this area, and I don't think it's going to hurt your business in the future. So. Next is I6, the approval to submit application for EPA funding, Sylvan Glen Phase 2, with an introduction by City Engineer Steve Van Deck. Good evening, Steve.
Good mor, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item I6 is a request to approve a grant application to the EPA for stream bank stabilization and other work at Sylvan Glen Golf Course. This Sylvan Glen project is phase, is known as Phase 2. It's Phase 2 of a project that was completed about six years ago. And Phase 2 is divided into four areas, areas A, B, C, and D. Area A involves touch-up of Phase 1 to address erosion, add storm sewer outfalls, and restore drain channel width, and restore native vegetation that has been lost over the years along the Gibson-Runsaw Drain. Areas B, C, and D are pretty much the same. They all involve bank stabilization, drain channel reshaping, native vegetation plants, and, but it all... vegetation plants, and, but it also includes removal of an old golf cart bridge that's no longer in use, and removal of a very large, old, failing drain cove. The grant is for $375,000. It will cover about 45 percent of the project, which the total project amount is $850,000, and the city's share is $475,000. The city's three-year budget includes $100,000 in the current 2014-15 budget, and the balance of the city's share is included in the 2015 and '16 budget. We expect to put this project out for bids in February, and we ask the city council to approve the grant application to EPA for the Sylvan Glen Phase II project, and barring any unforeseen circumstances, EPA expects to award us the $375,000 grant by the end of this year. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve by council this evening? I just have questions, Steve. Is this going to help with some of the drainage issues that are currently going on at Sylvan Glen with any of that, or is this specifically for something completely different than that?
I'm sorry, some of the what issue?
Drainage issues?
Drainage issues. No, it will not. Actually, it's stream bank stabilization mainly. The drainage issues on the golf course are related to the drainage system, the perforated drain system and catch basins, which over the years have been cobbled together, and some of that system is very, very old and in need of replacement. But I'm sorry to say that this project will not address that.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move the resolution as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we approve I-6 as printed in the agenda. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-7, the ICCA Funding Formula with an introduction by Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart. Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening. Just as background, the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority, the ICCA, we were formed back in '83, funded by a grant. That's how we have done all of our duties up until then. We perform the oversight function of our cable companies through this consortium, and for each of our 11 communities, we would not be able to do this by ourselves. It would be very costly. Many communities that don't belong to consortiums, they perform no oversight function on the cable providers, and they risk losing thousands of dollars in revenue and poor customer service. We provide oversight for our three companies, Comcast, WOW, and AT&amp;T. In the past, we've conducted technical audits of the cable television providers' broadcast system. We've done financial audits and franchise fee reviews. And these reviews in and of themselves have resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars being returned to our communities for the underpayment of the franchise and the peg fees that we receive from our cable providers. So without this oversight, these underpayments would continue to be unchecked. So after 30 years, we're asking our communities to fund the ICCA because our grant is now. We have gone through the grant for over 30 years, and the, what we've come up with, for each of the communities to pay, we've based it on population and cable subscribers. So what we're asking for Troy would be $4,920. And we will continue to do financial audits of all our cable companies.
Thank you. I know there were several questions that were asked before the council meeting, and we have those responses at the table here. Any questions for Cindy Stewart this evening? Thank you, Cindy. I have a question. Ms. Bitner, do we have to fill in the blanks on this resolution this evening?
No, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Would somebody like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I-7, the ICCA Funding Formula, as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone at the table that wishes to pull a consent agenda item this evening?
Yes, President, Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items, and if you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they have all been approved. We do not have any announcement of public hearings this evening. None have been submitted. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals. Next will be council comments. Councilman Henderson?
If I may, I'd like to just take a minute to talk about Movember, and that's the reason you see facial hair on a lot of us around City Hall right now. Movember is a live-strong organization, has put together a month where they're building awareness for men's health, prostate cancer, testicular cancer. And I'm a victim of cancer myself. In fact, when I first came on to council, it was November of 2010. About three weeks later, I had a radical prostatectomy for prostate cancer. And if it wasn't for early detection, a friend of mine, who was a year or two younger than I was at the time, had undergone a similar process, and I thought I better get myself to the doctor and have a checkup, because I'd been lax in having those, and sure enough, they found prostate cancer. So very early stages. I'm a very fortunate individual in that regard, and so early detection is absolutely the way to go with all of these things. So get your checkups. Don't think you're too young for it, because you're not. And if you have a few moments, go to movember.com. In the search bar, type in Troy, Michigan Police Department. I've joined their group this year to help them in their fundraising efforts. So advertisement closed.
Thank you. I know that it certainly needs awareness, and I'm trying to do my small part with you. I wore a pink tie for breast cancer awareness in October. I'm thinking maybe we should do a tie as opposed to this, but whatever.
Be more comfortable.
Yeah. Mayor? Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
We may also want to mention, tomorrow's Veterans Day, obviously, we'll have our Veteran Day celebration tomorrow, 11 o'clock out in front of City Hall. Invite all the residents, and certainly all of our military people, to come. We'd love to respect everything you've done for us. We'll be there at 11 o'clock tomorrow.
Absolutely. The weather's going to be good for a change. Any other comments from council? Just a brief comment. Congratulations to Councilman Fleming. Thank you. On your election, it's bittersweet for us. You're going to be leaving us, I would assume, at some point, and thanks for your service at this point, and we'll wait for the official day, but congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Next are reports. I think there is a report I saw on the table regarding, did you want to speak on that, Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I'll just say, our city attorney and city administration's put together a brief timeline, but basically, I'll be serving on the city council, and my resignation will be effective, and submit that on December the 15th, which is the last regular meeting. And there's a process we'll go through. There will not be a special election. The remaining council members, there's a process, they'll start right away. To identify people who are interested, there's an application process, and of course, that will be on the city's website as well. But basically, if you're interested in filling this capacity, that I'll be vacating December the 15th, you'll need to submit an application, and it's on the city administration's website. There's going to be a press release and so forth, but you'll need to do that on or before Monday, November the 24th. Okay, and I encourage people that are interested, that you would serve until the next regular election, which will be in November of 2015. And then that seat will be regular on the ballot for election. There will not be a need for a special election.
So that person will not fill out Councilman Fleming's term?
No, Mayor, that is correct. That person would fill the position from December, hopefully December 15th, if council reaches agreement as to who to appoint at that time. From that point in time until the November elections, and then there will be a partial term on the ballot for November 2015, for the remainder of the term. So that will be as part of the election in November of 2015.
So we will have five positions up for reelection, November of 15? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mayor, that is correct, I believe. I defer to Ms. Bitner, but I think it is correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Let's see. I'll see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. There are no study items this evening, no closed sessions. So thank you once again to Mayor Pro Tem Campbell for starting this meeting this evening. Congratulations to you on your appointment.
Didn't mean to hit the gavel so hard either.
And just a special thanks to Councilman Henderson for being Mayor Pro Tem for the last year. Job well done. We are adjourned.